All right, calling this meeting to order, it is Tuesday, June fourth, the time is six P M. This is a meeting of the Westport School Committee. Uh, could we all rise for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, going into our informational agenda, we'll begin with our student representatives. Yes, thank you, Sharon. At this time, I'll entertain comments and statements from the public. Okay, seeing none. Now we'll go into our informational agenda. We have our student representatives here.
All right. Good evening Superintendent Albin, members of the school committee and everyone else in attendance this meeting. A little bit of news to share with you this evening. First off, the eighth graders headed off to Washington, D.C. today and will return home on Friday, June seventh. We wish them all a safe and fun trip. A save the date for eighth grade families. The grading promotion ceremony will be held on Wednesday, June twelfth at six P M. in the, uh, Westport Middle High School auditorium. Students should arrive at five forty-five and guests should enter through the auditorium to the A C A. Each student will be allowed four guests. And a little shameless plug right here, on, uh, Wednesday, June twelfth, the freshman class will be holding a Cold Stone Creamery fundraiser from twelve to nine. And twenty percent of your order will go to the Westport class of twenty twenty-seven. And lastly, this is for the West Mac PTO, but it's also for everyone in our district. The Seventh Annual Tough Kids Challenge will take place this Sunday, June ninth, at ten o'clock at the former Westport High School. Advanced registration ends Thursday, you can also sign up on the day of the event. We would like to thank the Westport Middle High PTO for all their effort and fundraising events that funded amazing opportunities for middle and high school teachers and student body. And, uh, I would like to thank you for the opportunity for joining you this year and, uh, hoping to join back next year. It's been fun.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Looking forward to having you back.
Good evening Superintendent Albin and all school committee members in attendance tonight. On May eighteenth, our juniors and seniors enjoy a lavish prom at the Fall River Country Club. Students dance the night away and make memories that will last a lifetime. We would like to thank Ms. Avila for organizing the event and to the junior and senior student councils for raising the funds for the sixth study evening night. Thursday evening, May thirtieth, was a very special evening for the juniors of Westport High School. Students from the junior class received book awards from Harvard, University of Pennsylvania, Brown, Brandeis, Suffolk, Saint Michael's, the University of Vermont, Western New England University, Endicott, Smith, Saint Anselms, Alfred, W P I, Salve, Saint Joseph's, Wells, and Bridgewater. Thursday evening was also a very special evening for the seniors of Westport High. Students from the senior class received academic awards, including the Superintendent's Award, Principal's Leadership Award, President's Award for Academic Excellence, President's Award for Academic Achievement, President's Volunteer Service Award, Scholar-Athlete, Citizenship Awards, Daughters of the American Revolution Good Citizens Award, Bi Literacy Recognition, and Phoenix Awards. Seniors were also presented with department awards. The class of twenty twenty-four also earned just shy of three hundred thousand dollars in scholarship money, which is an amazing accomplishment. Congratulations to all.
That's great.
On this past Saturday, June first, our senior class graduated from Westport High. Speeches were given by Ms. Charette, Superintendent Albin, Salutatorian Avery Carvalho, Class President Marcos Dutra Afrikania, and Valedictorian Madison Floor. Our top ten students, starting with our valedictorian, are Madison Floor, Avery Carvalho, Avery Avila, Corinne Holden, Caitlin Jones, Savannah Fantasia, Megan Lloyd, Sarah Perry, Hannah Therian, and myself, Alden Presner. Congratulations to all of our graduates as we know they will do great in their future endeavors. And finally, I would like to say thank you to Superintendent Albin, all members of the school committee, and Principal Charette for allowing me this, the opportunity to serve as one of the Westport Middle High student liaisons to the school committee. It has been my honor and privilege to work with you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alden. Yeah, congratulations. And we, uh, certainly appreciate your time here.
And all you've done.
Representing the school to our school committee and keeping us informed of all the events and goings-on in the building. Um, and congratulations on all you've accomplished and we're wishing you the best. And Tom, I think, uh, you have something for Alden there.
After your awards the other night, it's gonna be pale in comparison. But, uh, we just wanted to say thank you. It's a small token of everything that you've done, uh, to represent the students. You've done it very well and we're very proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening Superintendent Albin, members of the school committee and all watching live. Uh, I would like to start off with some important dates. The last day of school for all students, grade one through eleven, is Friday, June fourteenth, and this will be an early dismissal day at eleven A M. Final exams for all high school students will begin next Tuesday, June eleventh to Thursday, June thirteenth. Students that return signed permission slips will be available to leave after their finals at eleven A M. Permission slips should have been turned in last Friday. And lastly, the end of term four will also be on Friday, June fourteenth, which is the last day of school. M C A S testing is almost over and the last test to be taken will be the second module of Biology M C A S for all grade nine students. Last week was an amazing recognition and celebration of our student athletes and scholars, especially our seniors. And lastly, this is very, um, last minute update, but the Westport Drama Club will be hosting a karaoke night this year. It will be held on Thursday, June thirteenth at six thirty and will end at eight thirty. Food and drink will be for sale at the event. Please come to the show and help raise money for the Drama Club. Now for athletics. The spring sports season has come to a close and we would like to congratulate our spring athletes for a fantastic season. The boys varsity baseball team finished their season at twelve and six and they reached the first round of the M I A A State Tournament, where they would unfortunately lose six-three to Borne yesterday afternoon. The girls varsity softball team finished with a solid record of eight and ten and they reached the second round of the M I A A State Tournament. They also unfortunately lost yesterday, but it was a very close matchup. Our lacrosse team finished their season with a record of two and sixteen. The boys varsity tennis team finished their season seven and six and made it to the first round of the state tournament. And lastly, the girls varsity tennis team finished one and eleven. Lastly, I would like to thank everyone on the school committee and Superintendent Albin for once again allowing me to help report news around the school and I hope to see you next year.
Thank you, Jack. We appreciate it. Looking forward to seeing you next year. Yeah, thank you.
See, now we can't dismiss Alden to go home and do her homework.
Thank you all.
I'll bet it's starting early. If you're gonna do fine, you're gonna rock it. Very exciting.
That's great. Congratulations.
And thank you very much for representing us so well.
Yes.
It's an honor to have you as students representing us.
Have a wonderful summer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice summer.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have the superintendent's report.
Sure.
Actually, before you begin, uh, Mr. Robin, just to, you know, the athletic awards night and the scholarship night was, was mentioned and I just want to congratulate our students for the great work that they've done over the last year, um, representing our school so well. Um, you know, just shy of three hundred thousand dollars in scholarships. There were, our teams did great, so I just want to recognize the hard work that all of our students put in and also our staff, um, who organized the events and have been supportive throughout the year, so I just wanted to recognize them.
And if I could piggyback on that, uh, graduation, we received a number of emails, uh, just absolutely, uh, a great event and, uh, I certainly want to thank you for showing up and, uh, coming and, uh, you know, it was, the speeches by the students was really, uh, a moment of, of pride for this district, letting, letting us know that our kids are getting an outstanding education, you know, not just, uh, academically, but they're, they're, they're really decent human beings and, uh, I couldn't be more proud at this point.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, this is gonna be extremely quick and, and the reason I'm presenting this is, is because, um, as we know, the budget ha- it continues to get tighter and tighter here. I, I think we would be negligent not to take a look at some trends that are happening in Westport right now. So, the slide that you have in front of you was presented in the Boston Globe yesterday, which talks about median home sale prices rising in Massachusetts in two thousand and eight. If you take a look at that, it's, it's pretty easy from the color coding to see that Westport, um, has had a significant increase in the number of medium, uh, sales price homes, uh, from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-three. The percentage is sixty-six percent and, um, if we can go to the next slide. Sorry about that. This, I think, is an even more illustrative, uh, slide and one that I think we need to consider. If you take a look at the median sales price that we showed you, that was from eighteen to two thousand and twenty-three. This is just one year increase in the median price sale between twenty-two and twenty-three. And you can see outside of Beckett in the western part of the state, Westport had the highest number of homes that were actually purchased. And if you compare that to Dartmouth, I think Dartmouth was somewhere around five percent, we were at thirty-three percent. Why is that important for the schools? Well, it's important for a number of reasons. Can you just do one more time for me, Mrs. Kaminski? Thank you so much, I appreciate it. We've got three assumptions that we're making. Despite price increases, families are moving to Westport faster than other communities. Which doesn't seem to make sense from a supply and demand, except for the fact that we have to get rid of our concept of the nuclear family moving into these homes. And in fact, because of the affordability issue, what we're seeing is we're seeing multiple family units coming together and buying these homes. And so that's gonna have an impact clearly on enrollment moving forward. Additionally, uh, we've gotta take a look at what that impact on the schools will be, especially in light of the fact that we've been given our marching orders relative to don't expect more than three point five percent per year. And so we have to take all of that into consideration as we continue to plan for, uh, next year. And, you know, the sad part going forward is that, you know, it wasn't long ago where budgeting was sort of a, like a season. It was started in November and usually you were done more or less by February. I can tell you that, um, starting the fiscal year in, in July, uh, we will be working on the twenty-sixth budget because it is that desperate right now, even under the best of circumstances. And mind you, we have increased enrollment by a hundred and fifty-five students over the past three years. So when we were told that the problem was an enrollment problem, clearly it's much deeper than just an enrollment problem because although I'm extremely proud of the work that the staff have done to recruit and keep students in, the reality is, is that, you know, these are gonna be more costs that we need to countenance going forward. And it's gonna increase, uh, the services and, and, and my concern is some of the services that are already very expensive. So, you know, again, I, it, it's more about thinking going forward than it is about anything to do about this. But I, I, I am, I'm not afraid to say that, uh, I'm concerned seeing that data and I'm concerned anecdotally when you go through the community and see how many new homes are being built. It's, uh, it's, it's, so I think as a committee and as a district leadership and as a, as, as a school leadership, I think we need to come together and, and, and try and sort of strategize going forward. If we have any access to more specific census data, it would certainly be helpful at this point because again, we are gonna be on the margins next year and we know it. We're not, we're not candy coaters. We're going to have a very tough budget next year. So, um, if there's any questions you have, I'd be more than happy to, uh, answer them.
Yeah, just a couple of things on this. So, um, I would say, I mean, there are certainly challenges that this poses. It's a good problem to have, seeing increasing enrollment, student interest, right? We have families moving into Westport, um, but as you mentioned, it will pose challenges for our budget going forward. We know, um, the direction that we'll be going in in terms of what to expect from the town side. Um, and any increase that we see at the state level, you know, won't compare to the increase in expense that we see from taking on additional, uh, students, which again, it's a good thing that we're getting students in the building. That's great. Um, when it comes to, to budgeting, I think, starting our conversation with the town on these issues is important because that's something to keep on the radar going forward.
Absolutely.
Are there any other questions or comments from the committee on this?
Just have to wait till it happens and see what's going on.
Again, I just, I, I'd really like to get my hands on some good census data at this point, you know, because this seems to be happening much quicker than your, you know, decennial census. So, it's, uh, some real-time data on that would be hugely helpful, you know? And so we'll, we'll seek out where we can get that information. Other than that, um, I think the students did a great job discussing what a, what a great couple of weeks it's been here.
Right. Right. Before we move to our next item, I just wanted to note that we do have some retirements this year, um, from our teachers. So, Donna Edwards, uh, from the elementary school, Dan Harrington from the middle school, Kathy Santos from the middle school, Mark Ward from the high school, um, are retiring this year. Um, so just wanted to recognize them. Oh, and also Judy Olivera from the MAC is retiring as well, so. Um, I wanted to thank them for, for their time here at, in the district and all they've done for our students over the years. Um, and we wish them the best.
Absolutely.
Okay, committee liaison reports. So I, I added this as an item on our agenda going forward as a standing item, just to get a glimpse from the committee on, you know, we, we all sit on other committees in town, um, as the school committee reps to other committees. So, going forward, um, this item will be an opportunity for members to discuss anything in those committees that have come up that they want to bring to the attention of the school committee. So I think it's just a good way to foster discussion between the members, keep an open, um, connection between what we're doing here and what we're doing on some other committees as well, just as a centralized place to, to bring it, uh, to the full board, so.
I'm waiting for committees to contact when their meetings are.
Yeah, I know, I know that's still going on, the select board of points in early June. There, um, there are other appointments that they have, uh, terms expiring in early June, so that'll be coming up. You know, we, we may not have anything for this meeting, but just going forward, I wanted to make the committee aware that, you know, if, if there's any updates, you know, this, this item would be the place to share. Um, I know, uh, Chairman Brewer reached out to myself today regarding the audit committee, so we'll be meeting next week. Um, and then I'll have an update for the committee after that. Um, so, just wanted to make that, if, I don't know if there are any members that have any updates yet.
I did, um, attend the cable advisory board. It was probably over a month ago now. Not a ton of info to pass along, um, just some staffing, um, questions in terms of, um, reorganizing their staff. Um, it's certainly something that they're looking into and also a high-definition, um, cable channel, um, for the town. Um, so, there's a little bit of discussion on that in terms of, um, which channel it will be because you have to, you're basically replacing one of the existing channels with a high-def channel.
Sure.
Um, so, more to come on that, but, um, I did attend the meeting and I would think that, I would say those two are the biggest topics that we discussed there.
All right. Thank you. Anything else?
Just that I expect the agenda for the long-term building committee will be posted tomorrow or, or Thursday for next week and I believe you're the, you're the representative on that response, so, okay.
All right, great. All right, well, thank you. Uh, moving along to the bill warrant dated five thirty-one twenty-four, four hundred and six thousand dollars, four hundred and six thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-two cents. Um, you know, if there are any questions for the committee here, uh, but always welcome to email myself and I can contact the business office for specifics there. All right. Moving on to the student and staff attendance report. Members have had a chance to review this as well. Not sure if there are any specific comments on it from the committee.
I, I did have a, just a, a brief question for Superintendent. Um, the, it does seem like there seems to be a little bit of a drop-off there at the, at the end of the school year. Is that par for the course every year or is there?
Yeah.
Is anything an outlier this year?
Every year is a, obviously a unique organism, um, generally speaking. Um, typically, as you get later in the year, people start using some of their time that they don't want to lose. So, um, I, I think you see that reflected, but I, I don't think you see anything that would be so gross that would be an outlier that I think would require, actually, again, I'll, I'll say it again. I mean, I think our staff have done an unbelievable job of showing up and, uh, you know.
I think now that we've started doing this, everything has gotten a lot better.
I would say too, it's probably not uncommon across districts either.
I figure as much, but I just, you know, as a, as a new member, wanted to catch up a little bit and make sure my assumptions were at least partially correct.
Yeah, it's a legitimate, it's a legitimate question. The other, the other thing is that, um, you know, I'll say it publicly, this, this, this staff has gone through some, this has been a really tough year for staff, um, for a lot of reasons, you know, personal loss, illness. Um, this has been a very tough year, uh, for a lot of people. And I, I, I want to publicly thank our, our staff for, um, you know, putting the kids first and, and, and really doing their best. We, uh, we have, we have had people do some pretty horrible things and they're, they're back, uh, slugging it out. So, um, I think overall, we, uh, we have a lot to be thankful for, for the people who come in on a day-to-day basis. They, they really work hard for the kids and, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm extremely proud of them.
Okay. If there's something else on that item, we will move to the discussion of E S R funds. Michelle.
Oh, no, you haven't reached that yet there, my friend. So, right currently, right now, we have a remaining balance of forty-six thousand, seventy-seven dollars. Um, these need to be expended by August thirty-first. At a March nineteenth meeting, there was discussion with the school committee, um, on how those funds would remain to be spent. Um, I'll just quickly go through it with you. Um, athletic uniforms for the cheerleaders, four thousand dollars because they're worn, faded, and torn at this point. Um, athletic uniforms for boys soccer, um, that's a replacement because this year there was a decision to be made to give the, the soccer team their jerseys that they wore. So that is fifty-five hundred to replace them. Um, uniforms for girls soccer, again, there's a one faded, fifty-five hundred dollars from there. Um, one of the items that they're looking to, we're looking to purchase is a touchless power washer, which is basically, as it's exactly how it says, it's touchless. So it's this machine that is a power washer that they use in all of the bathrooms. They can use it for the bathrooms, they can use it for walls, toilets, floors, ceilings, whatnot. So it's not strictly just for the bathrooms, it can be used for hallways, stairways, and whatnot. So, we originally put two of those machines down, but we're really looking to keep it here and to utilize it here and that's eight thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars. Um, academic expansions, expanding the math program to grade three, fifty-five hundred dollars. And academic expansions, again, for the ignite program, which is twenty-one thousand. So that puts us within a three thousand dollar range that we know that we can, we can come up with the remaining three thousand to do this. And that would use a hundred percent of the E S R funds to date that need to be, again, utilized, um, spent by August thirty-first.
Didn't they talk about wrapping the van?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna ask you, compared to that March meeting, what, what does this look like compared to that discussion?
The wrapping the van, I'm still waiting for a quote from the, um, people to wrap the van. That is something that could potentially come out of our revolving for transportation. So we're waiting to get a price on that. We've, we've gotten a few different versions of what it would look like, so we've kind of gone back and forth with them of what we want. We don't want it to look too gaudy, we don't want it to look too, like, out there, but, so, we're waiting for the second one to come back to us.
And apart from that, are there any changes to this list that were made post that March nineteenth meeting? Okay.
We had reduced down from one surface, from two surface cleaners to one, to be able to meet the forty, closer to the forty-six thousand.
Okay, 'cause these were the two programs they were talking about on, you know, the two academic programs. They may just stop one year and that'll be it.
Right, the, the.
That's the, that was my question.
Yeah, the ignite program is a high dosage tutoring program and, uh, Mrs. Kaminski, uh, has been working very closely with the D E S C. And if the chair would recognize her, I think she could share a little bit about that.
Please.
There you go.
Good evening, thank you for having me. Um, so the ignite program, I'm gonna share more specific data about the ignite program's impact on our kindergarten population later in the meeting. Um, but basically, in a nutshell, the state has underwritten, um, the use of this high dosage tutoring program for thirty of our kindergartners who in November were tested, um, as behind in their, uh, you know, in their on, on grade level, um, skills. And so we, we plugged them into this program and they've been meeting, each of these thirty students has been meeting with the same tutor for fifteen minutes every day. And, um, in the last cycle, which was five weeks, um, the, the most you can get for the whole program in tutoring, if you started when we did, which was in February, is five hours of overtime. And our students have averaged four point nine five hours. So, they've gotten nearly all of the tutoring that's available to them and the data is quite remarkable. Um, we're gonna press the, so the state has underwritten that at a cost of twenty-five hundred dollars per student. Um, we're gonna continue that conversation with Desi to see if they will do the same thing with our kindergartners again this year because if we can set our kindergartners up with first-grade ready skills, then they're gonna be on track to, to meet benchmarks moving forward. And we know that if students aren't reading on grade level by grade three, there's a likelihood that they won't graduate from high school. And, um, so, our goal is to really meet that benchmark and have all our kids reading on grade level by grade three. Um, and we're headed in that direction as you, as you've seen from the data that I shared with you. Um, so my goal with that little chunk of money is to move this tutoring opportunity to our middle school with a, with a select population that still have skills gaps, that haven't benefited from this, this direct systemic explicit instruction that we've moved to this year, um, so that we can help them kind of remediate their skills and get back on track to meet with success when they get to high school. Um, so it is a, it is, this, this situation is a temporary situation. If all of our ducks line up and we can get our elementary kids on track with, you know, um, fluency around reading, we won't have as many moving up to middle and high school that have skills gaps in reading. So, um, that particular program could be a year or two that we would need it. Um, with regard to the math, we have, we have moved to I-ready classroom math for grades K to two and we've had a lot of success with that. I can come back later in June and share the math data with you if you want.
Great.
So, because our students in K to two have learned these new habits of mind that are embedded in this program, we want to give them the opportunity to continue with that deeper thinking around math in third grade. So we're expanding the program to third grade. We've already met with the teachers to talk to them about how the students coming up to them will be already y- used to using these ways of thinking and talking to each other about math. Um, and so the cost to expand it to third grade would be fifty-five hundred dollars and we were hoping to use the E S R funds for next year.
Questions? That's twenty-five hundred per kid for five hours, that's five hundred dollars an hour per kid for tutoring.
It's fifteen minutes a day.
Right.
Over a period of time. The five hours was just February to now, so the twenty, the twenty-five hundred dollars is the year-long program. Um, it, it's, it's an investment, it's not an expense. We're investing in kids' futures and helping them gain the reading skills that they need. And it's more than just the fifteen minutes a day with, the FaceTime with a professional. It's the data, it's the analysis of the data, it's the conversations that we have around what kids are learning and how they're growing, um, and building confidence with them. So, Desi is underwriting this at a huge expense across the state, mostly in gateway communities. And they allowed us to participate, um, because they also want outlier communities or, or more rural communities to have that advantage as well. Um, I, I would love to expand it to the middle school and, and help our students with that.
So that twenty-five hundred that you mentioned, is that, does that cover the entire cost currently or is?
Per student, yes.
Per student?
Mm-hmm.
So that, the money that we're receiving for that covers that total cost, right? There's a.
From Desi for kindergarten, yes, yeah.
Okay.
They prefer really to do first grade. Desi is underwriting across the state mostly first grade, but we came to them with this kindergarten population because, as you know, last year we restructured our elementary school, so we have more reading specialists there now. And it would, it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be sensible for us to invest that, that time, effort, and money on our elementary school population because we already have teachers who are doing that in small groups at the elementary school.
So then it would be twenty-five hundred dollars for the year, so that would be like total of ten hours. But I'm trying to look at the bigger picture.
Yeah, so it's a seat. So let's say a student signs up in, in September and they exit the program in November because they make such great progress. Because at middle school, they do have some reading skills, right? So they're gonna enter the, the program at a, at a later access point than someone that has no reading skills. So they're gonna exit more quickly and then we can put someone else in that seat. So it's not a one-time, once they're in and out, exactly.
It's an equaling of twenty-five hundred for ten hours, the seat would be.
No, not necessarily. That's the, that's the time that they expect kids to spend in the program to, to make all the progress. But if a student accelerates faster than that, we don't lose that seat. We can put another student into that seat.
On, at the seat costs, the seat cost would be for a whole year.
You can look at it that way, yeah.
Right, because they need to switch in, but I, I was just thinking at that cost, is there another, something else that you could actually get more for your money?
So I would say no, based on my experience with ignite. The, the return on the investment is unprecedented.
And with that program, um, you know, I think it's great, I think, I just want to be mindful that that's, you know, one-time funding that we're using. So is, because my question is, would you see, would you, would you see a, a marked improvement in that one year? Or would you, or do you think that that, this is something that we need to be baked into the operational budget going forward and for us to keep supporting it?
I would say not at the same extent because we're gonna have fewer and fewer students who come. I would say not at the same extent, because we're gonna have fewer and fewer students who come up to the middle school with those hu- huge skills gaps. Yeah. I mean, the only, like, students who enter the district not having gone through our school's K to middle school, they might come in with s- serious skills gaps. It's still our responsibility to give them the benefits of what we know about what works when we're teaching kids how to read.
Any other questions from the committee on that? All right. And I don't think we have that on as an action item tonight, so, um, it's just informational.
Right, just information.
Yeah. Um, but that's expended by August thirty-first, sorry. Okay. So, I'm sure we'll see this again before, uh-
August thirty-first, correct. Right, 'cause now what we have to do is they have to go out, provide us quotes for everything, then we have to get invoicing, purchasing, and then it'll get submitted. And you'll see that next, you'll see it on one of the bill warrants.
All right. Thank you, Lisa and Michelle. Um, okay, next on our agenda, discussion of moving district offices and the usage of fields. So, this has come up, um, over the last few months, especially following town meeting. Uh, we were looking to, for areas in the budget to reduce, and, you know, we, there's a cost savings associated with us moving out of the old high school. And the document that the committee members have in front of them is not, this isn't the full document. This is just an outline of the issues that we discussed at the, at the last work session on considerations for us to, to, uh, talk about with the move. Um, we mentioned the use of the fields, which wouldn't be an issue for us until spring of next year.
Correct.
The district would also need some storage there as well, in the garage space.
Correct. We, we have a basement area that has old files, some of which we cannot get rid of yet, the specialized files downstairs. We have to keep all of our documents for all ten years. Um, so, there is still probably about, oh, I, I would say, at least sixty, seventy file cabinets that are downstairs. So, one of the recommendations would be to bring those upstairs. It put them in an area of the garage area, or there's two offices in there that we could put them either between those two offices or in the garage area, organize them so that the access, the school department would have, would still be the full use of the garage area and two offices off of there that would hold storage for some of the technology that we do have, which we do have that area alarmed and locked, and the filing system. At the same time, when they go, you know, when the trucks are kept there, you know, every single day, they could do a building check of maybe just the exterior to make sure there's no broken windows and to make sure there's no, like, water damage or anything that's broken and exploded down in the basement. You know, that's probably like a fifteen-minute walk total on somebody on our end.
Um, so, in addition to that, uh, we'll, we would continue to, under the current approach, we would continue to maintain the use of the grounds.
Correct.
Including mowing, weed whacking.
Correct. Which we do have budgeted already.
Right. Um, you mentioned the files and the storage. We would continue to handle the use of facilities for the gym and the fields.
Correct.
Um, we continue to utilize the garage and the two offices, you mentioned that. Um, the district would also conduct daily building checks there, which I believe was done with the middle school on this side.
Right, they do it now, right now. So, what they do, and that was one of the things, like, by us doing the winterizing, again, so I did talk to, uh, Mr. Moniz today about the winterizing. I know there is, it's a two-unit, like, area, so, one section is on one unit, another section of the building is on another unit. There is a pot that he would need to replace in order to fix the unit that is on the gym because of heating, heating it during the wintertime. So, he was gonna look into that and get me a price, and what that would be to fix, I, I can't, I don't remember exactly what piece of the unit, he said, but he said it would definitely need to be fixed in order to be able to run that section to keep it heated for anybody using the basketball courts during the wintertime.
Right.
So, that, we're waiting for a price on, you know, on there.
I know I've received a lot of questions about this move in particular, so, I guess just to address some of, some of, uh, those concerns, the move here, in addition to being a cost savings to the district, which, given our budget, is something that, you know, there aren't many alternatives outside of, unfortunately, reducing staff. So, this is one of the areas where we saw a cost savings opportunity, um, given the outcome at town meeting. Uh, we know going forward what number we can likely expect from the town for our budget. In addition to that, I would also say that, um, you know, the town has the building and the fields there that's, that's under their purview currently. There are some, as is true of any older building, there are some issues with the building, um, that, you know, we currently maintain. I think there's opportunities also for some support for staff by moving folks into other buildings as well. And, again, I think this has been a process that's been in place for years since the closure of that building. And going forward, I think it's important that we have, not only the district, but that the town develops a plan for the use of the building. Um, it's a quite, quite a bit of time has passed. I know this, it's not an easy topic to tackle, um, but, you know, quite some time has passed. And I think at some point, a decision has to be made by the district and also on the town's part on the usage of, of the building. So, I think, given the situation, unfortunately, that the district is in, this is sort of the direction that the committee has felt the, you know, that we need to, to head in. Um, but I would welcome any comments from the committee, because I wanna make sure that we're, you know, we kind of, we're kind of on board with this before we move forward with, you know, speaking with the town on this and continuing the conversation. So, would welcome any thoughts.
What does their conversation on their end sound like?
Um, I, I think, you know, they, there's certainly questions, and, and that's understandable, um, from their side. And I think we've, we're, we're certainly open to, and we have, uh, worked with them and, and are open to addressing issues that they bring up. And I know there's been exchanges, um, Michelle, I know they've asked some questions of us. So, if, do you mind just briefly mentioning some of the-
No. I mean, one of the things was, the conversation's gone back and forth about winterizing the building, that maybe it should be winterized. Um, they do have a concern, obviously, about keeping who's gonna maintain the fields, uh, who is going to handle the use of facilities, because they know there's a lot in the community, that the community uses the fields quite a bit. They use the basketball courts quite a bit. You know, and the, obviously, the community doesn't wanna let go of that. And, you know, I don't blame them for that piece of it. So, I think some of their questions is community questions, but also building questions. I think some of the idea of evacuating out of that building also raises concerns of leaving a building in that state, and who, at least with us being in there, you know, we can see things that happen.
Does it cheat out insurance-wise?
It does. So, having an empty building also, I believe, on their end increases their insurance from what, um, Mr. Hartman had told us. So, there were some different questions regarding that. Um, again, the fields were a question, unanticipated cost by nobody being in that building, building checks.
Do we have, do we have, were we given any number on, on that?
We were not. We did not get any type of number. It was just brought up to us.
I think that would be helpful for us to have from them a, a number.
Yeah, I can, I can find out.
'Cause we, I mean, we are in this together, as a matter of fact. It's one, it's one budget, and we're, we're a piece of the town budget, so, you know, we certainly wanna work with them. And, and I understand that there are questions, and so.
And I think that was one of the, with putting this together, it seemed like they want an idea. So, what does the school department plan to do? Like, what, what is your plan? When do, when do you plan to be out? What will happen at that building? Who's gonna maintain fields? Who's gonna continue with the use of facilities? How are these things gonna handle? So, I think it's something on their end that they wanna know, but the school committees and the school departments' idea is gonna happen there, and so that they have the information, and then I'm sure that they would have some feedback in regards to anything that we would send them as well.
Right. And I think, I, I appreciate you putting this together, because I think this addresses a lot of the questions that, that were, that were made. So, especially on the use of the field. So, we would continue to maintain all of that, which is important, I think, not only for the town, because, you know, other leagues use that space, but also for, for our own sports as well.
Right. And it is something that we have talked about to meet with all of the leagues that do use the town, that use the fields at the high school. Anybody that uses the, the basketball courts, anybody that uses the baseball fields, soccer fields, other than our own students. So, I think it's a conversation and a meeting that we plan to have this summer. So, I think, at the same time, dealing with the town on this, it'd be a great opportunity to meet with all of these, to talk about everything. 'Cause I know sometimes the town leagues have questions about how the fields are used, how they're maintained. We do as well. And I think it's been probably years, and I would say probably years, I can't, I can't remember being on my end, of having meetings with the town, the leagues that are outside of the school leagues, of what this looks like, maintaining it, access to the building, bathrooms, ma- you know, trash, all of that kind of stuff. So, I think it, it's really a good time to be able to get updated with all of that, with them and us, and knowing where we're going, moving forward.
Right. So, as, as a, as the chairman of the Long-Term Building Committee, I can tell you, uh, for the last year and many, uh, many, many versions of that committee prior to the last year, uh, the questions have continually been that, been asked, what, what is to be done with this building? Um, and, and i- in the end, I think, not, we're, we're dealing with the exact same thing we're dealing with here in the school committee. There is simply no money in the budget for any kind of major conversion or, or, or major, uh, major upgrades to the building that would be necessary to utilize it as a, as a civic center, uh, or some, or even move town offices. Um, without rehashing all of the continual arguments and continual, uh, perspectives that exist with regard to where the building, or what, what the building should be used for in the future, um, I do have a couple of concerns with this move, um, and I'm wondering if there are ways to interface with Mr. Hartman and, and, and the, the town as well about how to kind of mitigate some of the, some of the issues that may come up. Uh, one, one issue in particular is, no matter what, any, any discussion that, that happens surrounding where the building, or what happens to the building, uh, down the road, uh, there is thi- this, this idea of code compliance and the, and being able to maintain, uh, the usage without having to go, go and, and, uh, get, get, you know, recertified as far as what, uh, what, what code the occupancy would, would fall under. So, I'm wondering, in conjunction with some of the, uh, some of the, the storage that's being utilized, and I think it's been mentioned, a lot of the IT infrastructure that's there, um, you know, would it be possible to even, to have even a single employee still, uh, still, if domicile, for lack of a better term, wi- within that building, uh, or within a small section of the building? Um, and, and would it be physically possible to winterize most of the, the school if you, you know, and then still maintain, you know, a small, a small portion of that, you know?
I think it's really important for us to get together with some of the, just follow the suggestion that you made. Let's get him in here, let's talk about it. Because it's not just a financial issue. The fact of the matter is, you know, we've been short three custodians now for months, because it's just virtually impossible to find people to, because-
Right.
It's not a, it's not a Westport Community Schools problem. It's, it's a national problem. But it's impacting us in a sense that we just don't have the people. And, you know, the, the, the problem is that we're, we're almost like prisoners of our own success in that. Every time we continue to expand and we have, you know, more showings in, in, in the playoffs and things of that nature, um, we just don't have the bodies to, to get the work done. And it is really putting a strain, both financially and psychologically on the staff, because, um, it's, it's a real challenge to try and take care of what we have. I remind people, and Michelle was here before, I got here, obviously, but we actually had more custodians and maintenance prior to this building opening, if I'm not mistaken. Isn't that correct?
Correct.
So, you can imagine that we've got a much more intense building here that needs to be cleaned. And at the same time, you know, we've got three sites or six fields that have to be lined. And so, this is, I, I think it's really important for us to meet with the town so that they can really understand the nuances that we're facing as an organization. It's not punitive. We are not looking forward to spending a summer of moving out of the place. You know, we've been through some real transition over the past four years, and it looks like it's gonna be five years now. And we're a little disappointed about it, to be honest with you.
Well, I think that's, you, you bring in, bring up a point that it has been a concern of mine as well, which is just the, the sheer logistics of, of this move out. And, and I think that, I mean, there's, look, you look at the numbers here, there's no questions. There's significant savings at play here. Uh, additionally, by moving staff to, uh, to, to this building and to, to other buildings, that, that administrative staff is in a better position to support the, the administration that, that is in, in the school.
And if I may, I appreciate saying that, because as you know, per the recommendation, uh, we will be moving an administrator over to the west, which means that this district will now, or this school will now have, you know, one west administrator, which having, you know, everyone from Lisa to, to Robbie and everyone else will be able to provide the supports that we not, can't necessarily do, you know, two miles away. And so, um, uh, it's, it's not ideal, but we're gonna make the best of a, a very challenging situation. And, you know, uh, we'll, we'll be happy to talk to anybody in the town about the who's, what's, and whys of this at this point.
I, I think that it, it will be crucial, um, to have a, some sort of workshop, if you will, between, uh, the school committee, the school, the school administration, as well as, uh, Mr. Hartman and, and staff at the, uh, staff of the town, just to, to coordinate and make, you know, every department in the town is having to make ends meet, having to, you know, figure things out. This is, this is, uh, another, another situation where I think it's in all of our best interests and, and the town, and, uh, certainly the, uh, the students that, that we serve on this school committee. Um, it's in everybody's best interest to work together to try and figure out a way forward with this and to not, uh, it, you know. The bottom line is, when it comes to the town budget, school budget, we're, we're all, uh, we're all going back to the same pot that's getting smaller and smaller and smaller. And we have to, have to adjust. So, um, I, I, I think, I would like to thank all the staff and, and everyone who's put a lot of work into figuring out these logistics thus far. Um, and I'm, I'm hoping that with, with this, again, I, I, I see, I see how this is necessary. I really do. Um, I'm just hoping that there's a way that we can work with the town to make this as, as smooth as possible. It's gonna be a rocky road no matter what, but what can be done to make this a, a smooth transition that does not leave huge gaps for, for either side of this equation?
Understood, yeah.
No, thank you for those comments. I, I know I'm certainly willing to work with the town on that. We're all, we're in this together, right? So, uh, I'm willing to work with them and, and continue the conversation and make this workable. I think it's something that the district has put a lot of time and effort and thought into, careful thought, over quite a period of time now. Um, and it's well thought out, and I think, you know, any way that we can work with the town to, to help make this happen and, you know, alleviate some of their concerns, that's something that I know I'm committed to. So, I just wanted to put that out there on us.
Maybe something in like an executive session with Jim Harnett or something on that, that they'll come in and we'll work it out, or is it smaller groups now?
We don't, we don't need an executive. We do it in open session, just, uh, we'll just have a meeting with them, um, on the issue, and we can schedule a work session on that specifically.
And, Mr. Chair, I definitely see this as being, um, not, not only in a meeting, uh, capacity, but also just sheer workshop, like actually to figure out, okay, you know, steps one through ten, through, one through a thousand, and maybe, uh, just trying to figure out practically how to get this done.
Right, agreed. Yeah, that's important. Okay.
One last thing. Um, I know that, um, Jim had put in his email that, um, I don't, that may have already been thought about and discussed and figured out, but I don't see it on the sheet. It's just, um, that being a polling place for elections and what we'd be able to do and how we'd be able to accommodate the town with that.
I know the, um, it was also mentioned that, that the state is looking to consolidate polling places. So, there is potential, I believe, um, and please correct me if I'm wrong, to use this building as a polling place, 'cause it's not currently used as a polling place.
No, and they did ask that if that did happen, and it wasn't defi- wasn't definite yet, but that, that, that's what they're trying to do, is combine, so they don't have all these different ones. And with that, we would have to have no school that day, which, again, for us, we could continue to have a PD, and it doesn't necessarily have to be in this building. We could move our PD over. So, school, the kids wouldn't have school that day, but we could have our staff doing PD between the map and the west. So, that was workable. And I think when we did, I think part of speaking to Jim one day, I did mention that, 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 we, we'd be able to make that work.
And just going off of that too, I, a question on that is, with the old building, just to, uh, just going through options here, if, would that, would the gym space still be able to be utilized as a polling place for this cycle if we were to start that process?
I totally think, we, this is why we need to have this meeting soon rather than later, so we can iron all of this out. We, we would-
I'm not saying that, this is obviously preferable if it can be done here, but in the event, for whatever reason, that it's not workable, you know, is that an option? That's, that's, that's my question.
You know, I, I wanna go on back to the-
And I'm sure the town would have that too.
I mean, everyone in this, in this district administration will do whatever we need to do to make sure that, uh, we take care of as many people as we possibly can, understanding that we're managing a paradox. We're not finding a solution, because going forward, the thing that I will be presenting to the committee once again is that, uh, we are incredibly short fields, as everybody is painfully aware. And with the, you know, the question about what happens to the old school is clearly gonna impact what happens here going forward. And so, I agree. I think, uh, we'll, 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 we'll make the time to discuss any of the issues that have been brought up, and, uh, we're not hiding anything.
All right. Thank you for raising that. Is there anything else from the committee on this? Is there anything else from the committee on this? All right, and we will, I'm looking forward to discussing with the town.
And if anyone does think of other questions, I can add that to the list because it probably is good for Mr. Hartnett to know ahead of time so that way, if he has to come up with information, he can be prepared for it. And then I can also do a little more back leg work on, like, insurance, let him know with that. If he has an idea on that also, anything that we know that might need to be prepared here before, so there's no secret.
If we could add the polling place issue to that too, all right, great, thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, we have an update on the OST program.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming.
No, thank you for putting this on the agenda. I split it up into this year and then already kind of projecting into next year. As you can see, well, I guess I'll just stop by, from reading this. Does anybody have any questions that kind of come out to them? Instead of me going, I mean, I can go break it down for you, but.
Yeah, if you don't mind, could you run through the?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, thank you.
So, for those that don't know, we are a pretty big program. We offer breakfast, breakfast program is at the Westport Elementary School right now. And then if you're in kindergarten, that's for all students. If you're in kindergarten, you get bussed over in the morning over to the MAC. We have the after-school program, which is for grades K through four. Now at the former high school, will not be soon at the former high school. And then we have the pre-K, which was started on March 15th for our little ones. And that is, they remain at the MAC because they can't take the bus over to the former high school. And then a summer camp that is also at the former high school, which runs seven and a half weeks from eight to four thirty Monday through Friday. And also a big program, so this summer we have, that's actually already increased over about a week from me doing this. So we have about 70 children that will attend the summer camp this year. And mostly, almost all are five days a week. And then you see that we employ 10 staff in the summer, one of which is one of our own high school students, which has been great. Self-pay and then pays vouchers that provide income to the program. And then as you see the monthly net, yeah, yeah, the revenue each month for the school year is 2,200. It's a bit more in the summer for the months of July and August. Based on inflation, rates of pay to staff and all that, you will see at the bottom that as of 8/29, we had to increase the rate on both morning care, afternoon care, and then the pre-K program as well. Didn't necessarily have a decrease at all in students, and in fact, the numbers have increased. So we had to raise the cost in the morning to 15, 30 in the afternoon, and then 25. We remained at that for preschool. But we also did increase the time instead of 2:30 to 4:30 for pre-K. We've now upped it to five o'clock after kind of hearing a lot of feedback from pre-K parents that they were highly interested in at least the additional half hour to five o'clock due to like traffic, commute, and work. So we are doing that as well. That number, which started out from five students when we first started this pilot on March 15th, has already doubled, so we expect that, I personally expect that. That's what we have the first day of school, but as with this, typically goes with this program, the first day of school you have, you know, for instance, I already have 70 kids enrolled from K through four on the first day of school. But I would guess it's just a matter of time from when that 70 turns into about 85 kids from K through four. And probably will reach capacity, the capacity for pre-K is 20 children. I don't, I think that's going to happen by October or November.
So you said the capacity for pre-K is how many?
Uh, yes, so I'm licensed for 20 pre-K children.
20, okay.
Yep.
And where, what's the capacity for the, for the K through, you said K through four?
K through four, I could have well over 100 students, because
So you're not up against a cap there by any?
No, so what happens is now the EEC will come in and license those areas at the MACumber. And they'll give me, you know, based on the space, you could have probably 130 kids in that program. These kids don't come every day. There's a large group of kids that are five days a week, but parents pick and choose so they can have consistent schedule, whatever works for them. But collectively, I would guess by November, in morning, afternoon, and then pre-K program, I would guess an easy 130 kids will be in the program.
If something, closing of the school, where are you going to go? Or is it stay there for now, or if they, they close, if we move the whole thing from the high school, are you still going to be one little area in the high school, or are you going to have to move your whole program?
I have to move the whole program.
To where?
MACumber.
On the column on the right with the, for the 24, 25 school year, are those, those the students that are currently, that have signed up for the program for the fall, for the next school year?
Uh, yes, so there's 36 automatically enrolled. So I, because the demand for the program, I typically start enrollment in March of this school year before. So in March, March 1st, I send out kind of, anyone who's already enrolled gets first priority. Anyone who is a child coming from the DCF system also has to get first priority. And then any siblings, obviously. Anyone new to district coming into K gets the next round of kids. And then after that, it becomes kind of first come, first served, and then a waiting list. And that's all based on staffing and ratio.
I know there was a waitlist, was that for the summer program, the waitlist?
I have a waitlist for the summer program that unfortunately I can't chip away at. And that's due to staffing.
I know last year, the committee approved the pre-K as a pilot, so how has that, how has that gone over the last year?
So it started in March, I would say for what my expectations were, great. It's been great to see, obviously you see the number there. It's not as many kids as I would want to be in it, but trying to get a pilot started in March when parents' routines were already set in stone was kind of difficult. So for the kids that have there, have been there, I think that the parents, if you were to ask them, love it. These kids are there five days a week and some pretty high needs kids, to be honest. So that's been great for them to have that opportunity that they wouldn't necessarily have.
Not a question, I guess, just a comment for the committee.
Sure.
This is all done through a, you may know, but this is all done through a revolving account that is maintained by the rates that are set by the program. So this is all kind of, so this isn't from the operational budget when we talk about these expenses here.
Takes care of itself.
It does, yeah, it's self-sustaining. So all the salaries, all the expenses, everything, everything, soup to nuts comes from this account and then has a balance.
If I may, they actually clean up their own areas, so.
Yeah, we do, we do the custodial work there, yes.
So again,
They do a great job.
People need to know that, you know, everyone's going over and above, it's not, it's just short people, we're short help.
And your pre-K program already has 11 students enrolled for September.
Yeah, so the chart on the bottom is exactly, so anything at the bottom is set in stone. There's 30, yes, so those 36 kids in the breakfast program already have a slot, they are, they're in. The 70 students in aftercare from K through four are students that, whose parents have already sent in their application and registration to be there. And then the 11 students in the pre-K program are already locked in as well. So what I'll typically do in the midsummer is see what the staffing will look like because we do have, we're going to need to hire more staff for the school year. Based on that, I'll then open it up to the community and just say, hey, there's, you know, let's say 10 slots. I'm just throwing it out there, 10 slots from K through four, first come, first served. But it's, it's a program that fills up. I'm never now, you know, I'm never worried about the concern to not have enough kids in the program. It's large.
I noticed you included the net on the bottom here, which I appreciate you including that. And could you just give us an idea of sort of the, I know it doesn't touch the operational budget, but just the expenses that are associated with the program, you know, you have staff, but.
Yep, so that's staff salary, that includes my own salary as well and the program coordinator, which obviously are the two higher salaries. That is all the expenses, so we feed the children in the morning, the students in the morning, so that is breakfast. That is all their snacks and any other program supplies, and so everything comes from that. And the reason for the increase, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. The reason for the increase, if you're wondering, like the 25 to the 30 kind of per afternoon. So our rates hadn't changed, we hadn't made a rate and change, a change in rate, I'm sorry, since 2021. But each year, as you, we've always been able to give our staff increases. And so based on that, we had to increase the parent, the parent rate. And also with the, we saw a significant, if I, actually Melissa Souza would be able to go back to it, she, I believe when she looked it up, it was almost a 56% increase in the snack order alone because just everything went up, yeah. So we've seen, you know, when maybe we could, we could spend $300 a month on snacks, it's easy 600, $650, and not that, that many kids. So, yes, how can I answer your question?
So just, just curious, you mentioned some staffing issues, is it, are you, do you have a whole staff at this point, or are you still down?
No, so when I say staffing issues, I'm not short-staffed. The concern sometimes is that with this number of kids, this number of kids, well, pre-K to four, the number of kids that come to the program, obviously after school, some of the kids have higher needs. And so what their supports are during the day aren't their supports after school. And so I always try to get additional staff to kind of help in that way.
And also sometimes during, so different times, Leah, sometimes she'll have a lot of college students. So she may be fine right now and all summer long, and then once they go back to college, then she kind of goes back to a different hiring. So it's like a rotation that you, that
Yeah, like in September, it's going to be different. We have a good, I would say five staff that are in college right now. That's great, but every semester their, their schedule changes. So then sometimes in, from September till December, it's great. And then they get their new schedule for, after intercession, so exactly January. And then it's, oh, I can't work Monday through Friday, I can work Monday, Wednesday, Friday, it's a puzzle piece again. So I'm not short-staffed, but I always kind of have to overstaff it a little bit. At least by two, at least by two staff.
If you compare, I was going to discuss, you still have to go right, I got one more, but go right. No, go ahead, please.
Wait, it's just a totally separate issue. I'm just curious, and if you don't have this number in front of you, no worries, curious what the breakdown between those self-pay and the vouchers, really?
I actually, I have that here for you as a note. So 24 school year, 26% of the students are pays vouchers and receive subsidy. So I've always pretty much consistently been at 25% of total enrollment. Our children receiving a subsidy. It ends up amounting to, like for instance, in September, it's a, actually, right now it's 26%. In September, it's 25%, I mean, just call it 25%, but always a quarter. And I personally would anticipate that to be more, only knowing that I have several students that are going to be in the DCF system that are going to come up and they automatically get a voucher. So I've been as high as 28%.
And we can share a document with you that shows expenses, the revolving that comes in, what the income that comes in, and it's broken down too. So we could, I could share that with both of you.
Please, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Any thoughts or questions from the committee?
Is the plan to continue with the summer program, it's no sound on that chart, so.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm sorry, the, yes, it's just that I could never project out those numbers, so I didn't, and I'm not really sure if there'll be a rate increase, to be honest, on that parent rate, so I didn't really want to put anything on there. But, yeah, it's, and we also run through February and April vacations as well for parents. And we do all the half day, most of the half days, if, I think there's six half days a year, and three of them are open to parents, so. Personally, I don't see it getting any, I never see this number decreasing, only increasing, which is a great thing for parents, obviously, but to have 120 children, I would guess by November, is almost like saying that's an entire grade. That's probably what we have at the MAC at K, the K students. So it's, it's an undertaking. I mean, I say it all the time, and, you know, I'd like to make it clear also here today, it's not, it's truly not just childcare, it's really not. It's really coordination with families outside agencies and everything in between to make sure these kids are cared for before school, during school, outside of school, until 5:30, so.
All right, anything else? Okay, well, we appreciate you putting this together. We wanted to, you know, I wanted to ask you to come here to give us an update on how it was going this year and looking at next year, so appreciate the update.
Yeah, sure.
We'll continue to talk about this as we go through the summer program and into the next school year, so.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is a curriculum update from Lisa Kaminski.
Hello, and thank you again for having me this lovely evening. So, you know, a curriculum update could take days. And I was trying, I tried to think of what would be the most impactful information to share in this second penultimate school committee meeting of the school year. I love using that word, penultimate, I learned it the other day. So I thought I'd share some reading data, because last year the committee was gracious enough in allowing us to restructure the elementary school and move three teachers, one from grade one, one from grade two, and one from grade three from the classroom, and create more reading specialist positions so that we could offer more individualized support to our earliest learners. And it has been successful. I don't have the complete year's data in your packet, because as we speak this week, they're doing the end-of-year DIBBLES assessments with kids. So I can get you an updated document before the next school committee meeting, so you have that information. But I'd just love to go through this and let the committee and the community know. First, I want to say that our staff does go above and beyond to meet the needs of our students every day. And I feel like this document is a testament to them. In kindergarten, our kids come at varying degrees of being ready to learn. Some, we learned, I learned today in a meeting, a student who is part of the IGNITE program, who's made amazing gains, had no preschool experience, had no daycare experience, came to school straight from home with no understanding of what it means to be a little person in a group and listen to different adults tell them what to do. And now they're going to first grade, ready to read at first grade level, which is very exciting. And so our kindergarten teachers do, pre-K kindergarten teachers, our kindergarten teachers, all of our teachers do their best work every day to meet the needs of our students. And as a result, 93% of our kindergartners this year are going to enter first grade being able to read whole words at or above grade level, which is remarkable. I shared with Attorney Thrasher earlier this evening that according to the NEEP scores, only 37% of third graders nationwide in 2022 were reading on grade level, 37%. And 93% of our kindergartners are going to leave kindergarten, ready to enter first grade. We're going to arm them with some information that they can work on over the summer so that, so that they can maintain, hopefully, those levels of readiness. That's a result of the work that our kindergarten teachers did every single day for all of our students. And I believe the IGNITE, the IGNITE program with those 30 students that they worked with every day from February until Friday, they're going to, will be their last day, has really helped to raise that number up. And you'll see the difference when, when we go through the rest of the document. So first, so first grade, last year, before we restructured, at the beginning, and you don't have this information, but I can get it to you, at the beginning of the year, 41% of our first graders were reading at or above grade level in the first DIBBLES assessment. That's higher than the NEEP scores, so Westport is ahead of the curve, but 41% is not enough for us. And so with the restructuring, oh, and at mid-year, last year, last year, we had six, six classrooms at each elementary grade level, and we had two interventionists. So of all the kids who needed extra support, we only had two staff members that could provide that support. This year, we have five now, so just, just keep that in mind. So at the beginning of the year last year, 41% of our students were reading on grade level. At mid-year, now the, the reading test gets more difficult as the year progresses. So kids need to continue to be gaining skills, right? Because they're not going to take the same test in September that they take in December or January. We had 43% reading on grade level. We only, we had forty-three percent reading on grade level, so a two percent increase. If you look at this year, seventy-six percent of our first graders were reading at or above grade level mid-year. I attribute that to the work that classroom teachers are doing and that extra layer of support that we've now provided with those additional interventionists. Sixty-one percent were reading at grade level at the beginning of the year this year. In second grade, last year, forty-four percent at both the beginning of the year and the middle of the year were reading on grade level. This year, at the beginning of the year, fifty-three percent of, of second graders were reading at grade level. Oh, no, I'm sorry, thirty-three percent were reading at grade level, and fifty-three percent by middle of the year. Something else to think about, too, is this ambitious growth. So as you know, Dr. Parker is the soccer coach here in the district, but he also owns a company called Ideal Consulting, and they provide support nationwide to, to districts around reading. And we get to access his platform, and he meets with us and provides us feedback. And when he looked at our data, at our data, quite frankly, he was amazed at the progress that we're making. And he, he said it's unheard of that districts will be at eighty percent ambitious growth or seventy-five percent ambitious growth. So that's, that's a tough number to reach for one student, never mind eighty percent of our students. So moving on to grade three, at the beginning of the year, forty-one percent of our students were reading at grade level. And mid-year, they're fifty percent. I expect these numbers to go up. The data will tell us whether that's the expectation comes to fruition. Last year, and you'll notice that the, the numbers last year are pretty consistent. At the beginning of the year, forty-three percent of third graders were reading on grade level. And at the middle of the year, only forty-one percent were meeting on grade level. So what does that mean? They might have still been making progress, but it was a little bit of a backslide as the text got, as the text and task got more difficult. And in fourth grade, again, last year, at the beginning of the year, forty-three percent, middle of the year, forty-four percent. This year, at fifty percent.
Oh, you had a different sheet.
Yeah, I'm going to give you those numbers, no. I have them in my, I know that, I'm just kind of trying to give you a comparison, because I made this, gave it to the executive secretary, and then I'm like, they probably want some comparison data. This, in a vacuum, doesn't mean a lot, right? So at this point in the year, fifty percent of our fourth, or I should say mid-year, fifty percent of our fourth graders were reading at or above grade level. Now, fourth grade, they're tested slightly differently, they're only tested on their oral reading fluency. But ninety-seven percent of them were making ambitious growth by mid-year. So I'm very excited to see what, what the data at the end of this week will show. And then we're also continuing to, to shift how we do things at the middle school. And they're using different strategies than the elementary school. But I, I just wanted to put this little fun fact down here. Through the use of evidence-based literacy practices, including repeated reading, our middle school readers are making ambitious gains as well. Using DIBELS, we learned that ninety-three percent of our students made gains, and eighty percent are now meeting grade level expectations in fluency. Compare that to, I told you, thirty-seven percent of third graders are reading on grade level in two thousand twenty nationally. Only thirty percent of eighth graders are reading on grade level nationally. And this year, our sixth graders, eighty percent of them are meeting grade level expectations, which is very exciting. So I want to thank you again for, you know, allowing us to make that shift. I think that the data proves that it's working. And I, I just want to mention to the whole committee, I was talking to Attorney Thrasher about it earlier, and to also the community, if you, if you listen to podcasts this summer, you might want to tune into the podcast Sold the Story. It's done by, I can't remember if she's from the Washington Post or the New York Times, Emily Hanford, who did a lot of, took a really deep dive, deep dive into literacy across the nation and has some very remarkable things to report out. And a lot of what I learned from that podcast and some graduate work that I did is informing the work that we're doing here in Westport, so.
Thank you, Lisa.
Any questions?
I had a question on the, could you just talk a little bit more about the ambitious growth piece? What that entails, is that, is that a, is that a certain percentage increase that a student has over time?
Yeah, yeah, so I can get you the specific numbers, but let's say from one testing benchmark to another, so like, beginning of the year to middle of the year. An average growth for a third grader might be three-quarters of a word per week. They're going to improve their fluency at a rate of three-quarters of a word per week. And ambitious growth might be one-point-eight-three words per week. So eighty percent of our students are making, like, double the gains of someone who's making average gains. But I could get you those specific numbers.
Great.
Just out of curiosity, how, how soon do you think end-of-year data will be?
They're doing the testing this week, and I know when I go on to the platform, they're inputting it into the platform in real time, so by Friday.
Okay, excellent, excellent. Good to, and thank you again for, for all the work that you've been doing on this and for our conversations earlier.
Yep.
I already have that podcast queued up.
Oh, good, yeah. You're not, yeah, it's going to become addicting, for sure.
I've been trying to do a bit of a deep dive since getting this information.
Yeah.
The other day as well. So I, I am curious, the, so the IGNITE, you mentioned the IGNITE program. Are there any other specific curriculum, either programs, either offered from the state or from outside that are being, that your specialists, the new specialists are?
That's a great, that's a great question. I have to give some, a shout out to my predecessor, who, when he was in this position, the superintendent invited him to go to find what were the, what were the most highly rated programs that were being used and bring them here. And they did decide to bring Wonders, which is what we use K kindergarten through grade four. And actually, the fourth graders, the fourth graders, the ones that are making the most ambitious growth are doing something similar in their classrooms as, as the middle school staff is. They still have the six teachers, right? So they still have, they didn't, they didn't lose a classroom, that we only shortened them grades one through three. So they asked for Wonders because they realized that the rigor that our students were experiencing K to three needed to be expanded to their grade level. So we did equip them with that program this, this year. So that's, that's the reading program that we're using around comprehension. So what you'll learn from Emily in the podcast is, basically, literacy comes from two bigger ropes that tie together that are made up of many threads. So what we've been focusing on tonight is the decoding piece. So really being able to look at, looking at, look at letters as symbols that represent sounds and how they come together to make words, sentences, ideas. And then the comprehension, how those words come together to tell a story that we then understand as a reader or we don't understand if we, we're not, you know, well-versed in it. So the Wonders program helps with the reading comprehension piece and the, and the different genre of literature, et cetera, et cetera. And then the DIBELS and the foundations and the fluency practice that IGNITE uses is the decoding piece.
So you hit on my exact, I guess, inquiry and, and concern. So it, it, it's not, you're not overly focusing on just the mechanics. It is, it doesn't involve.
It's a balance, it's, and we don't want to use the balance approach, because the balance approach failed us.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a structured approach to literacy. With a lot of data, using a lot of data, to kind of really pinpoint where our kids are strong and where their opportunities for growth are.
Yeah, I, I want to credit Lisa and her team. They've done a phenomenal job. And the Boston Globe, probably six months, maybe eight months ago, actually did an article on, on school districts and the reading programs that they were utilizing and how many of these districts, including wealthier ones, were utilizing what was considered now to be ineffectual balance.
Balanced literacy.
Balanced literacy, so it's good that we weren't on that side of the, of the chart. And it's a real credit to, again, forward-thinking. And, you know, we're, it's just part of the genre that, you know, we're not, we're not waiting for, for, you know, things to come our way. We're going after it, because it's important for these, if we can, if we can get these kids reading at the middle school level, at, at grade level, it'll be a huge jump compared to where we've been over the past few years.
It really will. It'll be transformational. And I do want to say again, like, our, our teachers work so hard. And I was, like I was telling Attorney Thrasher earlier, when I was educated as a secondary educator a long time ago, the, the tools I was given as a teacher didn't allow me to really teach kids how to read. And as a secondary educator, that wasn't my focus. I was teaching kids how to analyze text. But at the lower grades, the, the structures that were created and presented to students in education schools weren't really effective. Because what we've learned is forty percent of early, forty percent of the population will learn to read with what you put in front of them. But a full sixty percent need systematic, explicit, direct instruction that's cumulative over time and that targets what skills they're lacking. And we weren't doing that as a nation, and a lot of other countries weren't doing it either. And if you go back to the eighties and look at the data, it's pretty consistent that a big chunk of our population was not learning to read effectively. And it was through no fault of teachers or students, it was just that we didn't have the right tools. And now we have them, and I feel like it's our moral obligation to really use them, so.
I have one final line of inquiry. So I can't help but notice that the, the lowest number on here.
Yeah.
Is for, is for the fourth graders.
Right.
See how that would correspond with, you know, those, they began their, their educational journey during, during COVID, right?
Yeah.
So I could, I could see how that might be still, or we might still be dealing with some lingering effects. My question, I guess, is, are there specific programs or specific intervention strategies that, that you, you've been focusing on, on that particular grade level?
Yeah.
To try and break that up?
You'll notice that they also have the most ambitious growth.
I did notice that.
Right? So I think that the repeated reading that the fourth-grade teachers are doing is really having an impact. And I think the IGNITE, like, expanding to the fifth grade with that IGNITE program for key students will help to definitely continue to buoy up their skills. But I'm going to take a close look at the data to see who's, who's making gains, who's not making gains, and, and have, have the teachers have conversations with middle school staff so that none of those kids falls through the cracks.
And, and the thing we're facing going forward is that the state is clearly getting a lot of data on this high dosage tutoring, and what they're finding is that it's moving the needle. And that's why we're going to continue to look for, outside of government sources, to get monies to continue to try and expand this as far up the chain we can. Because we know that the student is, is valuable, and we also know that we've got to start looking not only at literacy, but, you know, math literacy as well.
Yeah, thank you. And I can say, just anecdotally, I've spoken with specialists and professionals in this field and on the science of reading and other issues, so I certainly appreciate that the district has taken a proactive and forward-looking approach on literacy, because it's what we need, right? It's a huge issue.
Yeah.
Not just in our district, but, you know, across the state and country. So I wanted to thank the hard work that you put into that.
Thank you.
And the team. Are there any comments, questions from the committee?
Well, it's important to me, and I'm grateful to be in a place where I get to try to make a difference with it, so, thanks.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, moving to our action agenda. The first item is review an act on WHS eighth-grade trip to Washington, DC, Tuesday, June tenth, two thousand twenty-five, to Friday, June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. I do not see anyone here to present on that, presumably because the folks aren't currently on the trip. So unless this isn't an item that needs to be voted on tonight, does it? There's no urgency to this, is there? Okay, so with that, I would.
Just to let you know.
A perfect.
They actually did bring a wreath in honor of one of our veterans, who just recently, I think it was Chair Jender that spoke with these individuals on one of those missions.
Oh, Clifford.
Cliff Breitman.
Cliff Breitman.
Who also laid the wreath at the town's Memorial Day ceremonies.
So we have a wreath in honor of him. And that's, if it hasn't been displayed, it will be, so.
Great, thank you. So I guess in saving presentation time, we won't act on this tonight, but we can include this on a future agenda, so I will entertain a motion to table this item.
So, second.
Okay, motion second, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Review an act on school committee meeting minutes Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and school committee budget work session minutes dated five-twenty-one, twenty-four. Is there a motion to accept that?
I'll take a motion to, make a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay, all right, motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, okay, that carries. Acknowledgement of soccer championship donations totaling fourteen thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars. Are these, this isn't, these are just donations that we received, or?
That's correct, so that we could have the event that we have.
Okay, great.
We were very concerned about taxpayers having to pay over and above, considering the tightness of our budget. The people from Westport stepped up and were very generous in recognizing our state champion soccer team. So we appreciate the kindness and the generosity of our community.
Okay, do we need an acceptance on this?
Yes.
All right, so, and is there a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept the donation, second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye, opposed, that carries. And thank you again, echoing what Superintendent Aubin said. We appreciate any donations we've received to supplement the great work that we do here, because, you know, we always, it's always difficult, so we, anything we get on top of that is appreciated. Okay, next, review an act on food service director job description position for FY twenty-five. Before we get into this, Michelle, would you mind giving some background on this?
Sure.
Thank you.
So we have not had a food service director in this district probably since two thousand and seven. In true Westport style, as Mr. Aubin has said in the past, that many times the positions are combined with other jobs. So when I first started, I was teacher assistant, moved to HR, from HR, went to data administrator and took on the role of transportation. Then from there, went to food service director slash data administrator slash transportation director. So I earned my license for business manager and continued to maintain business manager, food service director, transportation tech, to data administrator. So we were lucky enough to get a very fortunate Felicia Patrico as our data administrator and also our webmaster. So that was a huge burden taken off my back doing state reporting, because state reporting is a beast in any district. I mean, we're a small district, but yet it is, it is a beast. So in saying that, as, you know, as we progress through food service and whatnot, and it's, and it's something I'm passionate about, but unfortunately, the time right now with, I mean, we've been fortunate over the last three years to have free meals across the state. We have just been assigned and told that we are a community eligibility provision district, which that means is because our free and reduced percentage is more than twenty-five percent at each school, we are mandated to participate in the community eligibility provision. The amount of money that you receive as reimbursement is very similar to what we receive for free meals. I could send you guys, I can send everybody to the committee the guidelines of what that reimbursement is. Typically, we charge three dollars for a meal, so we typically get reimbursed anywhere between two dollars and ninety-one cents a meal. Can range to three dollars and twenty-three cents a meal, depending on the eligibility of the student. So one of the things we, I tried to decline participating in this, and then I was quickly reminded that there was no declining, you have to participate. But along comes with that is a lot of work for the first two years. By year three and year four, the amount of work that you have to put into this on reporting is, is not as difficult. But the first two years is very difficult, because there's a lot of paperwork that goes into it. So in saying all of that, and over the last few years, I've looked at trying to get a school, a food service director, because I don't feel that my time as food service director is given to, first of all, my staff as the way that it should be. I don't feel I can spend enough time in the schools overseeing the food quality, inventory. I have a very good secretary who spends a lot of time, that does all my ordering, watches pricing, does a lot of the backdoor reporting for me, checks in with the food service managers, food service staff. This year, I've started to need some food service manager training, she's been able to provide that. Farm-to-school, farm-to-school was a huge undertaking, because in order to participate in farm-to-school, you also have to be active with the students, you have to be active doing all types of, like, you know, taste testing. You need to be reaching out and meeting with local farmers. You need to be talking to other local districts to find out how we can procure those items locally. And again, you need to have the time to do that. Project Bread is another, another grant that I get throughout the year. I've received about eight thousand dollars this year in Project Bread money. That is also to help with our school's summer eats program, providing meals to students that, from the outside, not just our students that participate. not just our students that participate in the summer program, but for students off the street. We could have families that could come in with four, five, eight students. They can come in and access breakfast, they can access lunch. This year, we're going to be working with Mrs. Schaub's to be able to provide her extended day students breakfast and lunch as well to participate because they have access to that as well. So we'll be working all, all of that, and this grant does help to provide the funding for either materials, professional development, or for paying staff to come in to do that. So our school lunch program used to be just really a ten-month program and is now expanded right through school vacations. We provide, we provide food for the math camp program in February and in April for breakfasts, for lunches. And, you know, again, I, we would love to tackle more of the locally grown foods and work closer with a lot of the farmers. I've attempted it, we've, we've done a lot of work with it. But to do it a hundred percent and to do it efficiently, we need a food service director. We need somebody that can be here, that can, can do this and work with our staff all the time. And that's working with also the administrators in the building. Like, you know, hey, we want a culinary person to come in, we want to be able to have them work with the kids one day a week for like two hours to teach them certain nutritional facts about things. Working with our nutritional teachers as far as our phys ed teachers on how they integrate nutrition into the classroom. We had a culinary program two years ago, it was great, our kids loved it. We had like eight students that participated, they did a really great job. You know, eventually, we'd love to get a culinary person that comes in that works with our menus, that works with the nutritional guidelines, that ties the menus in with the guidelines, that puts program software onto the website that can actually, you can click. You have a student with a gluten-free allergy, you have a diabetic. They can go in, they can click, and they know what their carbs are for the day based on what we're serving. So there's a lot that goes into it that personally, I just, I'm not able to get to the program a hundred percent. I'm probably giving forty percent to the program, fifty percent to the program, and I just feel that there is a lot of room here that this program could really expand way beyond where I can bring it at this point. One of the things that would be good to know, so typically, a salary for a food service director ranges anywhere from seventy-five thousand to ninety-five thousand based on the numbers. I can share a document with you that shows the food service director salaries across masks with people that have participated in it. I'm looking to pay someone sixty-five thousand for this role because I would still be overseeing a lot. Because I'm the procurement officer, I would have to proceed, I would have to oversee the procurement piece of it. So it would be something that I would not expect a food service director right yet to go into that piece of it. Also, that money would not come out of the general budget, it would come out of the revolving account. So I currently have a secretary that handles that. The salary basically is about forty-seven thousand. So really, the only difference in the impact on the food service revolving is about eighteen thousand dollars. We currently carry a balance of about two hundred and thirty-one thousand in the school lunch revolving account right now, thanks to just, you know, the state issuing free meals and whatnot. We have to, we are only required to ma, to maintain three months of revolving net profits in that revolving account. So part of bringing this in would be the expense of the food service director and also a nutrition program that we can put online that is from menu-based to show the school's nutrition and all the nutritional values for all the food that is served here. And then also taking this program and expanding. As I said, I think in a previous meeting, the Macumber School, we have garden, a garden being installed over there for our younger kids so that they can then begin there. And one of the hopes is that we bring it full tuition up to the high school, middle school, high school. So, you know, again, any questions that anyone has, you know, want anything to review on the prescription, I'm more than happy to ask any questions.
So the secretary that's currently, that, that position that's currently paid from?
Correct.
That's, that, that position is paid from revolving also?
A certain portion of it comes out of the revolving, a certain portion comes out of the general budget because that person currently handles the tech piece of it. They do all the purchase of the technology and also do some reception position.
So my bottom line question, is there any change to, any change to what comes out of the general budget?
There probably would be some flexibility in that depending on what that person would be doing. So the position would be posted, you know, potentially, hopefully, there would be somebody that would apply for it. And then that position that's in current, would then, we'd take some of those to our responsibilities to move them around. So the exact number, I couldn't give you what that exact number savings is. It could be a little bit of flexibility, but I could get that number, you know, just.
But ultimately, looking at potential savings as opposed to additional expense, okay.
Correct. Oh, yeah, there'd be no, there'd be no additional expense to the general budget.
Can you say that again, please?
There would be no additional expense to the general budget.
No, that's important.
Higher food service director.
Yeah, that's important. And just a note too, I, I think, you know, it'd probably hard, it would be hard pressed to find a district that has a single individual that is both the business manager, transportation director, and the food service director. So I think there's certainly a need for it, especially, you know, you touched on the additional reporting requirements that are mandatory, that, you know, we're bound by. So that, that in itself is a, is a significant workload. I had a question on the, the pos, the job description itself.
Correct.
Was that, was this sort of modeled after?
This was one that was in play years ago. And then we have gone through and just kind of updated a little bit with today's.
Sure.
Information and.
And the, the other piece to this is that obviously, you know, with the increase in different dietary needs of, of kids too, it's becoming much more complex in terms of feeding our kids. And that's why I'm trying to get away from as much processed food as we possibly can because we, we know what the obesity issues are and, you know, the allergies, the gluten-free, the, so, you know, the person taking this job, this is not going to be right and fluffy. They're going to have a lot of responsibility in terms of improving the quality of the food. And again, I want to, I want to publicly give Michelle a lot of credit. She's done an exceptional job of bringing scratch cooking to the district. It's a lot of work and I appreciate it.
We also do prepare meals at our Macumber location for our council on aging. So Mondays and Fridays, we provide meals for them. We do charge them a flat rate of four dollars a meal. We have Cambros that they come by, they will pick it up, they bring it over, they serve it to them and whatnot. So we try to work together with them to find out, like, you know, what, what, what are the meals that they like? Because obviously, they don't like chicken nuggets and, you know, there's certain things they like and they don't like. So we work together closely with them to try to help offset that. Eventually, we'd love to do the Monday, Wednesday, Friday, but again, they have a budget that they go with. So, you know, we still would try to work together with them. Which, again, that's another program that we could probably access if I had time to find out how do we access as a school district to be able to fill them in? Like for Jen's program, we can provide down the road probably a snack program that would tie in with her students because we're all in the same building. Again, we haven't tackled that, but then that would give some leeway in her budget to have a little bit of relief on the breakfast piece of it, the snack piece of it. So it would definitely help in the long run by just having somebody that has a lot more time in the day to focus on that.
Right.
Just, can I say one thing?
Sure.
I do want to thank Michelle publicly for that too because this summer, all the kids would be fed breakfast and lunch at no cost. Parents always have to bring in, you supply the breakfast, but they have to bring in lunch. Knowing that twenty-five percent of the population there this summer is on a paid voucher, that's huge. And certainly a burden that parents don't have to worry about on any level, even a private pay. You're already paying tuition at fifty-five dollars a day, on top of it, a lunch every day. So I know that when they find that out and I'm able to tell them that's, I mean, it's appreciated on my level of like up to here and theirs will be even higher, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
All right, any further thoughts or questions from the committee?
This is going out soon?
It will be, yes.
Good, good.
Michelle, again, working with you for a long time and knowing the twenty-seven different hats that you wear, it's, it's incredible that you're able to get the job done and do as well of a job as you've done. At the same time, two weeks ago, we voted to cut four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And a hundred and sixty-five thousand of that was a teacher, two teaching assistants and, and summer school programming. For me personally, again, I know I'm the only one voting in the room, it would be tough two weeks later to vote to create a new job for someone, for a new position that is needed, and I will not deny that. We should have a food service director. How we don't is probably because of the phenomenal job you've done. And again, I don't want to take anything away from you, but as an elected official, it's a tough one for me.
This isn't coming out of the budget, right?
No.
Right, so this doesn't come out of the budget.
It's not coming out of the budget.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you bringing up the point. I think it is difficult, given the situation that we're in, between making cuts, we're also, it's also a contractual year. But I think, you know, in my opinion, ultimately, this is a position that's necessary going forward. And these requirements only get more strict as time goes on with nutrition and, and planning. So I think for, for the district, this is an important piece, looking to the future. Because I, I, you know, as, as has been mentioned, you've done a phenomenal job. But, you know, going to the future, I, I don't know with increasing requirements how much longer one person can wear all those different hats without, and this is, I will say too, given the, the situation that we're in, this is probably the, I think, most fiscally responsible way we can approach it through the revolving account because, you know, again, I know it's still a concern, but it doesn't impact our operational budget. So to build the fund of a needed position without having to tap into that with the, you know, given the circumstances is, is a responsible, I think, approach to this, so.
If I knew this was having any impact on the general budget, obviously, I wouldn't, you know, have even gone this direction. You know what I mean?
I think the thing we need to clear up for the community also is the, the amount of money that exists in that revolving account is strictly limited in terms of how we can spend it. We cannot spend it the way we would certainly like to.
And there's, there's a cap on the balance that can be carried on that as well.
Correct, correct. Like, by the end, I'll have until probably September, the end of September, that I will have to spend down probably about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of this. So last year, I was able to use that for, like, we put new equipment in at the elementary school. We've talked about putting new equipment at the, I've talked about, so one of the other pieces that would come out of this would be a new steamer for the Macumber School. I know the committee has gone different directions over the last year and a half about putting any new equipment at the Mac because there's always been that, are we going to stay there? Are we not going to stay there? Are we going to move them up? Are we, are we going to put administration at those? So there's been some question with that. So a steamer is something on the cheaper end that I can have come out of here. And then I still have to spend that, and again, we're going to be taking out school cafeteria tables to make it easier for the custodians to come in, pull them up, roll them out. So you're getting rid of the tables we have now. So that, I believe, was like fifty-eight thousand. That's already come out of here. So we're still working on seeing like, what can I use cafeteria kitchen-wise that can be between there? That's why this Farm to School grant, that, you know, all of, all of this program is, like, how can we use that? Because if not, we can get fined for not utilizing and spending down that money, so.
And the other piece to this is that this allows us, in terms of free lunch that the state has done, has allowed us to do infrastructure changes that otherwise we would have to go back to C I P C and ask for the money. And we know that that's a very limited amount. And so I, you know, again, it's also the fact that we're saving town money by not asking them to provide the infrastructure and using this money that quite frankly, comes as a result of the free lunch program that we've had over the past couple of years. And again, I want to credit our staff in terms of how we've spent that money in terms of looking at a long-term benefit of the funds that we're expending at this point.
And it's a very big health risk not having people to understand or be able to do that on a constant basis. Because, again, allergies are.
It's crazy.
craziness and illnesses or whatever, like, you know, you have to be on top of it.
Just to follow up, I, I, Mr. Patrico, I, I share your, your sentiment that it, it, it does, it, it hurts to have to make those tough cuts and then come back and, you know, on the surface, it looks like just adding another position. But, and that's why I asked the clarifying question, does this affect the general budget in any way, shape or form? And on top of, you know, the, the funds that are there that have to be spent one way or the other. Not that I'm trying to pile, continue piling side loads of hats on.
I fully understand.
Yeah, I, I would, I would not vote for this if it did affect the general budget. But if the, if the ultimate number actually might end up being a bit of savings, I see.
I can assure you that we wouldn't have even presented it because there's a whole host of different positions that we have. We don't have a director of guidance at a time where social emotional learning is, is clearly an issue in this country. So, you know, we, we're very cognizant of, of the appearances and, and how it impacts the taxpayers, so.
And, and I, again, I would like to thank both of you and the rest of the administrative staff for being, being creative when it's necessary. And this is, seems like another example of that in front of us, so thank you.
Okay, any, any thoughts on this?
No.
I'll make a motion to accept the new position as it's been given to us.
Okay, all right, motion made in seconded. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, that carries. All right, moving to our next item on the agenda, review an act on a fifteen hundred dollar grant from Project Bread for the school lunch program.
That's me again. So we've received a few grants this past year, probably, like I said earlier, totaling probably about eight thousand dollars. Some of the Project Bread is to help expand our breakfast program, which we've had a little bit of a struggle on the middle school, high school side because of the spacing and having all of the students, all eight to nine hundred students trying to get in here that sometimes majority of middle school, high school kids tend to not want to eat breakfast at seven o'clock, between seven and seven twenty. In the past, years ago, we used to have break, students, we always had a larger breakfast participation because students would, nine o'clock would come, and now they're all awake, and now they are hungry, and they now want to eat breakfast. Where the seven to seven twenty, it is a challenge to try to get them to eat breakfast. I've worked closely with some of the people from Project Bread. And again, they're trying to see how they can help increase that participation for breakfast. I, it, it's still been a challenge, I will say, for this year, it's still been a challenge to get that in. But this grant here for fifteen hundred is to expand our summer eats program, which, again, we qualify under that map of low-income students in this area. So this is our site that we use. So this fifteen hundred dollars goes towards paying for salaries for the summer eats program to be able to feed students breakfast and lunch, whether they're in a summer program here, whether they're in the extended day program, or whether there's walk-ins from the street. So I have usually two staff that are here, and they provide breakfast and they provide lunch. They'll make fresh muffins while they're here. They tend to have a little bit more time in their day to be able to do, expand that. So we're hoping to expand that program more this summer and get ourselves.
Nice.
Great.
Into that.
Thank you, Michelle. Any questions from the committee? Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the grant from Project Bread.
Okay, all right, motion made in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that carries. Review an act on receipt of thousand-dollar scholarship for Health Sciences Award in memory of George Goble. Is there any background on this or?
I don't have any.
Okay. All right. I'll entertain. We, no, absolutely, we're always appreciative of, of any funding we receive, these grants, so I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the grant, the science grant for George Goble.
Second.
Okay, motion made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Routine matters, correspondences and notices, I have none. Topics to check, could not reasonably anticipate forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting, nothing there. Also, with that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second, all right, motion made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that carries.